I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Felka.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda as received or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. The agenda's been approved. Next we'll move on to public comments if there's anybody in the boardroom today or online. I'm sorry.
Present.
We're gonna do this one first, right?
I don't have.
The hearing.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes.
I'm sorry, we have to do the hearing in a separate meeting.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry. All right, we will first move on to the public hearing. It is approximately 9:01 a.m. First I have a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing as published on March 14th, 2024, in the Courier and the Hudson Herald.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, it is now about 9:02 a.m. And we will entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, aye, the hearing is open for any question or comments from the public if there's anybody that wishes to address us at this time.
I'm wondering, maybe we don't do the presentation first and then allow that?
Yeah, we allow for them.
We can do that.
It's the first time we've had to do it this way.
It is, this is new today. So this, this hearing is new, required by state law, change that was enacted late last session. So we were required to publish what we thought our proposed property tax levy would be and then provide our citizens a chance to come and speak to that. And that, I will just remind everybody, that's the only thing that can be discussed at this hearing is the property taxes. And afterwards, we can, we'll go to our regular meeting. We do plan to have a budget work session towards the end of the regular meeting as well. So the numbers in this hearing are a little bit different than where I think we will be for our final budget, but I, this presentation will match what we published in the paper as our proposed levy. So I have the, we're gonna start out with the format we've been using.
Can you enlarge that any more?
Yep, I'm trying to do that right now. How's that?
Better, thanks.
Okay. So we have four primary property tax funds that we use. And the base, primary one is really the general basic levy. So most of our departments are funded from this, this levy. And I will, I'm gonna slide down to the bottom of that. So we are capped by state law to $3.50 per thousand dollars of taxable value. That's the most the state says we can have to operate our general basic levy. So this year, we exceeded it by a substantial amount. And this shows 1.5 million. That is not quite where we started. There are a few adjustments that were, that are reflected in here. So because all of our adjustments are not reflected, it shows up in here as use of fund balance. And it shows an increase in collections at this level of 2.6%, $529,000. So that was really all the growth, if you will, that we received this year and generated that $528,000. The general supplemental is another levy we're allowed to use. We have a large increase there. We tried to maximize our employee benefits. You can code those to this fund and transfer them to general. And so we have done that. If, to do all that is an increase in collections in that fund of 8.4% or 889,000. So for our general fund and the combined supplemental, it's an increase of 1.4 million in taxes, increase of 4.6% in collections. And again, this is, this is kind of old news back about a month ago, probably when we prepared all this. The rural basic levy, which we use to fund eligible items such as the rural patrol and a lot of secondary roads funding, that tax increase is 300, roughly 302,000, eight and a half percent increase in collections there. And the last piece of the property taxes is our debt service levy, which is declining. We have a total reduction of taxes of 604,000 there. Because our bonds were, that were repaid with property tax are nearing being paid off. So we have a large, a substantial reduction there, 34%. So our total property tax askings at this point were an increase of 3.1%, 1.1 million. Another primary operating fund we have is secondary roads, so I've reflected that here. Total expenses projected of about $9 million. That does not include construction done directly from the local option tax fund, which is another about 1.9 million. I, we do have our special revenue funds included on here. One of them is American Rescue Plan. And we are, we have a lot of projects that should be well under construction in fiscal '25. So I'm estimating we could spend as much as 13 million on the projects that are underway. Local option sales tax. Here's the 1.9 million for roads. And then we also transfer 1.9 million to offset the rural property taxes. So that's kind of the summary of our picture. Then, what is the impact to an individual or a business? We've, we've talked about this quite a bit. This was a revaluation year that's done every other year by the county assessor. So all property values in the county could have had an adjustment. Many were increases, but there could also be reductions. Just depends on the particular property. And that, and also it, it depends a lot on property sales in the specific neighborhoods. That's how the assessor, that's the really short sentence of how the assessor does that. So our total taxable property value this year was 5.9 billion. Debt service is 6.9, almost 7 billion. Our rural valuation is 975 million. So then I've taken the taxes that we looked at on the previous slide. So 20,919,261 for our general basic levy, 11,415,000 for the general supplemental, 1.1 million for debt service to get to our urban, our county, it's really the countywide rate of, the collections are 33.4 million. Then the rural basic is 3.8 million to get to our total proposed tax collections of 37.3 million. This next section walks through the actual levies. So you can see the countywide rate is $5.57 this year. And that, it's just a touch lower than what we had last year at 5.57, also 5.87, but there's a little, little more in there. Rural basic is rising to three, basically 393 from 366. So for rural taxpayers, the countywide levy will be $9.50 as compared to 923.4 last year. So then the impact, and I've tried, whoops, I've tried to include the average increase in residential properties. Average may not be the correct term. I think the assessor took residential and the total change. So it's really the change in last year's total residential assessed value to this year. And I've tried to reflect that in here. So to apply this to your own home, if you can look up your new assessed value on the county website, and you should have gotten a letter or two from the assessor. But if we would assume that your house was valued at $100,000 for this year, last year, then we, the amount that section went up is about 21%. So I have increased that, actually it's like 20, 20.5, that's why you see 120,500. So your home that was worth 100,000 last year, if it's worth 120,500 this year, then that becomes the basis for your taxes. Except that then the state comes in and they adjust the portion of your property that's taxable. They increased, or they reduced the portion that was taxable this year. Last year it was taxable 54.6%. This year it's only 46.3 for residential. So a property's taxable value then is just under 56,000. And that compares to a year ago at 54 and a half thousand. So it is an increase relatively modest. So in the, for urban residential property in the county, your proposed taxes at this rate would be $311 for the year, a $6 increase from last year, or 1.97% increase. And then I did the same thing for each other type, general type of property we have. Rural residential had a little bit higher assessed value increase. So their taxable value is now 57,465. Their taxes are at 546, an increase of $41. Commercial property, and I did, I just picked half a million for that type of property, just so I could show the full example. Because another piece of this law has the first 150,000 of taxable value taxed the same way as a residential. So they get that 46% rollback on the first 150,000. But above that, it's a rollback of only 90%. So when I factor all those things into the equation, that tax rate is, their taxes would be 2,744, increase of $531, or 24%. That is a difficult one this year, and that is really because of the way the rollback factor works in Iowa. And as we all know, that is set by the state legislature. Then we have an industrial property. And again, I just picked a million dollars as a place to start. They also have that $150,000 rollback on the first, or rollback, residential rollback on the first 150,000 value. So when you apply all that, their taxes would be 4,901, an increase of $180, or about 3.81%. And the reason that's so much lower than the commercial property is because they did not, industrial property doesn't sell as much as often as commercial property, and they don't have as high of a revaluation rate. Agricultural property in the county also saw a value, a reassessment increase, but the rollback also fell for them. So for rural agricultural property, their total tax would be $840, actually a decrease of $7 for that type. And then I did still track multi-residential, although I know that category doesn't necessarily exist anymore. But they had a fairly large revaluation increase, so I wanted to show that. They're, they were revalued 28%, but now those are taxed at residential. And 10 years ago, those were taxed as commercials. So that is a, that is a big change for communities. That property tax bill would be $332, an increase of 27. And I, just for your reference, for each of you, I did include the chart where I took out all the math and just show you the, basically the taxes and the rate increase for each type of property. So that all got rolled up into this notice, which was, this was required format, obviously, by the state. So it shows our current year, '24, and our budget year. And they, I'm, I'm not even gonna discuss the difference between the effective rates. That's just if we don't increase anything, which is possibly unrealistic, maybe. So then they tried to give the example to taxpayers of how their taxes would change. But unfortunately, what is not reflected on this notice that everyone got in the mail is the property revaluations. So this only works if your value is identical to last year, which probably aren't very many properties that that's accurate for. So this, this would show that an urban taxpayer will see a 14.75% drop in their property taxes from the county. And that's based on the publish, which is even higher than what we're going to do. But that's not, you know, as we just looked at on the previous slide, that is not what's going to happen likely. I mean, there are a few people maybe that this will happen for, but not most people. And the rural taxpayer, that's showing it going down by 12 and a half percent. So those just aren't, I think, I understand what the state was trying to do. It didn't, doesn't quite work very well in a revaluation year because you've got to know the, the new value of the property to make it valuable.
Well, it's very unfortunate because I said to look at this, any taxpayer would assume that their taxes, I mean, all of us would assume that our taxes are going down almost 15%. And, yeah. I, I don't know why they wouldn't have built that into it, or why at least it wasn't recognized that this is not including the assessed value because.
I think because, I, I don't know, I'm guessing, but this, that revaluation is, can be different for every single property in the state. So I think that's why they just decided to ignore it. But it does really limit the usefulness of this.
They kept county government out of the drafting of this and kept all of our associations out of it, too.
Yeah. Yep.
You've had some calls, I assume, well, maybe not.
I have, I've had, I don't know, maybe 22 dozen calls from people that, you know, I've tried to explain to them how this works. There's a few that I've looked up their values and tried to help them walk through what will really happen to their property. And for the county's share, as you know, and we'll talk about this in our work session later, for an urban residential property, we're likely to be more in an increase of 1.3%, but a very minor increase. And that's only if your property value went up the 22%. So.
Still unfortunate, though, even if it went up 1% and people will see this difference of being, should have been 15% in their eyes and.
A reduction, yes. Yes, that is, yes. So spread that word to everyone. This is not really what's likely to happen to your individual property. That, that's all my prepared comments, so.
All right, at this time, I'll welcome anybody from the public who wishes to address the board on, keep it limited to just the property tax rate. If there's anybody in room or online, you can come up to the podium and state your name and address, and then.
Hi, Julie Kelso, 214 Sheridan Road, Waterloo. Can you explain again why the agricultural property tax rate, did it go down 7%?
Actually, it's an increase. The proposal is an increase of about 8%.
Okay, there wasn't a decrease?
It's, it's, it's decreasing $7 for actual ag property. And that's really a factor of their revaluation assessment. And then you apply the rollback. And so, so last year, for example, agricultural property had only got rolled back, so that 91% of their property was taxable. This year it's 71% is taxable. So that, that difference in the rollback really is what caused their property taxes to decline for this year.
All right, anybody else wish to address the board at this time? All right, we will move on to comments by the Board of Supervisors. I know most of us will probably reserve our, most of our comments for the final approval of the budget. But I, I'd say at this, at this point, I appreciate both the leadership of Michelle and all the flexibility of our departments to help us navigate the, the challenges of working within that 3.5 cap. I think we managed to move a lot of things around and did it in a way that's going to maintain high quality level of services and still improve upon those services here. So I really appreciate, hats off to all the department heads, all, all of Michelle's work and all the, the finance staff within those departments.
And more work to come, right? We have a little bit more to accomplish completion.
We're getting close, we're not quite there.
All right, any other comments from the board at this time? All right, remind, remind the Courier that we'll wait for the final approval.
Certification, yeah.
All right, all right, we'll now move on to a motion to close the public hearing and receive and file oral and written comments. Any written comments, Grant?
No, sir.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? All right, the motion carries, the, the public hearing is, is closed. And we will now move on to our regular agenda.
Need to adjourn.
Oh, yes. First, entertain a motion to adjourn this, this meeting so we can go hunch to the next one.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed? All right. So do I just need to now call to order just a regular meeting? Okay. All right. I'll call to order a regular meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Felka.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Uh, let's go ahead and do a moment of silence again. All right, since this is a completely new meeting technically, let's all stand and, and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, entertain a motion on the agenda as received or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody from the public, either in the boardroom or on Zoom, who wishes to address the board on something that is not an agenda item, please do so at this time. All right, seeing none, we will move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors to approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Michelle?
All right, our bill payment today is 872,816.35. And the 6040 fund, we are paying 2,886.67. And we do have some large capital today. We are purchasing five vehicles for the sheriff's office. That total is 202,247. And then we are making a payment to purchase the building at 829 Sycamore for 325,000. That closing should be April 1st.
Very exciting.
It is exciting.
All right, any questions, board? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Felka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Work continues to progress on the Cedar River, excuse me, the Cedar Wopsey Bridge over Crane Creek. The contractors continuing to place the false work or the form work to, that will hold up the deck as it's curing. So work is progressing well on that. And our secondary roads crews, they were out over the weekend and they are busy cleaning their equipment. And then in the next few days, probably the early part of next week, we will start placing some spot rock. There are some potholes developing just due to all the moisture we've been receiving. So we're keeping an eye on those road conditions. Can I answer any questions today? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Roy Giving, facilities director. Just wanted to give you a brief update on the multi-department remodel happening here at the courthouse. We kicked off the construction this week with the demolition. That's expected to take about 25 to 30 days to complete that. So did want to thank everybody that was involved in moving the auditors. They're currently now up on fourth floor, room 410. And then also just wanted to make a note that the conference room down in the basement now is officially closed. And they are working in the Delhi area as well. So just wanted to say thanks to everybody, all of the staff that helped get prepared for this because it was quite a task. And I'll just be giving updates throughout the project.
Very good. Thank you.
Morning, Board. Manifesamir, HR Director. Just wanted to highlight an event that we have going on partnering with a conservation that we're offering to employees to attend a nature therapy walk. So we just sent out an announcement last week about this. This is part of the internship that we have with Megan Grow of UNI to support wellness initiatives. She also recently completed the data analysis of the survey that was done earlier this month. And we'll be getting that presentation and hoping to offer more opportunities like this. But want to thank Mike Kendrickson, Connie Savoda, and Amy Davison for their support and partnership with our department in offering a great program that's made available to the public and now can be made more available and highlighted for our employees. So we had 34 people sign up.
So I signed up for my spot.
You did? Great. I did, too. I think I, actually all of HR will be going to one, more just to participate, not to be, yeah. We're really excited about the response that we've gotten and hope to make this an annual event. So if you have any questions, concerns, or other opportunities you think we can help with initiatives around wellness, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other department heads, either in the room or on Zoom, wish to provide an update today?
I have a quick update.
Go ahead.
Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health Director for Blackhawk County Public Health. I just wanted to remind the board that we did get an email from the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services regarding a request for applications for, for 2025 county substance abuse programs that is due April 11th. All, the only eligible applicants are boards of supervisors. However, we at Public Health can assist with an application if you would like. There is a technical assistance kind of office hours on Thursday, the 28th, and Thursday, April 4th. And I am going to sit in on one of those to get some more information. This is not a funding opportunity that I'm familiar with, so it may be that it's, that it's new. But a little bit about this grant opportunity, it's up to $10,000 for Blackhawk County. The county is required to support a three-to-one match that cannot be state or federal funds. And you must choose one evidence-based program or service to implement. That would be education and prevention services, referral services, or post-treatment services like peer recovery, peer recovery coaching. So I just wanted to kind of draw attention to the board because it seems like this is a pretty low competitive application where we can get about $10,000 of funds for our county. And if desired, I can put an agenda item on next week's agenda.
Yeah, I, I think that sounds good, and I'll plan on joining you on the 28th as well.
Perfect, thank you. The other thing that I'll just add is that today and tomorrow is the Public Health Conference at Iowa. We have multiple Blackhawk County staff members that are presenting at this conference and sharing their achievements and knowledge with our partners across the state. And so I look forward to providing an update of that next week.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update today? All right, we will now move on to the minutes approved for the March 19th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to item six, this is consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution unless there's anything anybody wishes to pull out to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
So moved, moved and seconded. Any discussion or? So moved, moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. As you'll move on to seven, this is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the five-year contract between Blackhawk County and Cedar Bend Humane Society effective July first, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine for basic animal care services at a rate of twenty-eight thousand dollars per year. Other way, or two thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents per month. For the unincorporated areas of Blackhawk County, we approved and direct the chair to sign for the same and receive and place on file a certificate of insurance with the county auditor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion or questions?
I was gonna say, unless someone had anything they wanted to add or questions, I think we re, I say, reviewed it a couple of weeks ago or two or three weeks ago, and everybody was okay with the changes. And, um, the only thing I'll add is, um, the executive director did say she would like at some point for us to have some discuss, more discussion or would, um, consider, um, cases that are held for court and they're having impending fees for them. And I said if she'd send us some documents or something language regarding that, we could certainly always consider it or talk about in the future. But this would at least get our contract in place for now, so.
Okay, very good.
If we implemented those fees instead of having a whole new contract, I assume we could just do a resolution?
Yeah, if we, yeah, just for an amendment to the, if we did want to include that. So I think she, I asked for the language, I haven't heard anything back on her yet as far as what she proposed on that, so we were just moving forward.
Well, I think you, uh, Supervisor Layland, for your, uh, leadership on this. Uh, any other, um, comments or discussion? Uh, hearing none, uh, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Little.
Have a stay.
Jelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. Uh, next, we'll move on to other business. This is a resolution with the lowest responsible bid received from Staples doing business as high-touch business services Des Moines, Iowa, for the purchase of furniture for the multi-department remodel projects to accommodate the remodeling of the elections and treasurer's office. And resulting in the offices of auditor, assessor, and attorney and basement common areas also being impacted in Blackhawk County courthouse funded through the American Rescue Plan Act with a total bid of two hundred twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and fourteen cents to be awarded and direct to chair to sign as recommended for the same as Rory Given, Facilities Directors.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Uh, hearing none, uh, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Jelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. Item B, this is a motion to approve the JIR Investments LLC proposed amendment to real estate purchase agreement amending the purchase agreement for the purchase of the building located at eight twenty-nine Sycamore Street, Waterloo, Iowa, to reflect that the seller may intend to complete a deferred exchange on the internal, under the Internal Revenue Code, section one oh three-one, and to authorize the board chair to sign the same as recommended by Assistant County Attorney Michael Tridden.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead, Mike.
So, quick explanation. Uh, seller intends to complete this transaction using a ten thirty-one exchange for its own tax benefits. This doesn't change anything on our end except that, uh, the money, because there's been an assignment of the seller's rights, uh, the money that we're going to be transferring will go to a different entity that is assisting in completing the seller's, uh, ten thirty-one exchange. So again, the only thing it changes on our end is is who the money goes to. Uh, but we need to have these two agreements, uh, one, changing the, uh, the purchase agreement so that it, uh, so that it reflects that they may use this ten thirty-one exchange, and two, uh, a notice of assignment of rights that we are going to acknowledge, uh, that seller is assigning its rights, which then tells us that we can transfer the money to the assany of those rights, all right?
Excellent. Very good, everybody clear? All right, any other further discussion or questions? This is a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Uh, next, we'll move on to item C, this is a motion to approve and authorize the board chair to sign the acknowledgement of a notice of assignment where in Blackhawk County has been notified that JJR Investments LLC has assigned its rights but not its obligations under the, under the real estate purchase agreement with Blackhawk County for the county's purchase of the building located at eight twenty-nine Sycamore Street, Waterloo, Iowa, as recommended by Assistant County Attorney Michael Tridden.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion or questions?
Just a question for Rory or Mike, I guess the closing is still planned for April first?
That's correct, Monday next week.
All right, excellent, it's exciting to be moving forward with this. And thank you, uh, Michael, Michelle, and and Rory for for your work on this. All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Uh, we'll now move on to item D, this is a motion of the personnel requisition for the office specialist full-time in the sheriff's office with a start date of April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four to allow for training, uh, be approved as recommended by, uh, Lori Dunning of the sheriff's office.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Uh, next, this is item E, this is discussion, possible board action, approval of the county showcase video program agreement with CGI Digital. Let me go ahead.
Hello, I sent Gabby DeWitt, Marketing Coordinator, on that. Um, I sent you a, some paperwork on the agreement with CGI Digital. Um, Andrea Tempio is online if we have any questions for her. But basically, this project, um, CGI is a partner with National Association of Counties, and they will develop six one-minute videos for us at no charge for the county. Um, it promotes the assets and attributes of Blackhawk County using topics of our choosing. So that could be economic development, um, for sure, it'll be something, um, like a welcome to Blackhawk County services. But then also it could be outdoor recreation, anything that we want to highlight, um, about the county. And then those six videos will live on our website. They will link to the CGI website, and, um, CGI works to get sponsorships from local businesses for those videos. That offsets the cost, but it is not contingent on that. So we, if we sign this agreement and we go forward with the video production, they would create the videos for us even if they didn't get any, um, business sponsorships.
Is there a watermark or anything like that on the videos, or is it branded like from them or?
I don't believe so, I have, um, some samples that I can call up, let's see here, oops, ow. It's all good, I got it. I'm gonna share my screen. There it is. Okay, um, so this is their website, and the, here's like a, some sample videos, um. So yeah, there's not a watermark for CGI.
Cool.
Hello and welcome to Sheboygan County. My name's Adam Payne, Sheboygan County Administrator, and I've been serving this role for over twenty years. I can't tell you how proud I am to have raised my family here in Sheboygan County.
Set along the shore of Lake Michigan, the fourth largest body of fresh water on earth. Sheboygan County's varied landscape includes some twenty-six miles of beaches and coastline, marshlands, which are part of the Kettle Moraine and are overseen by the state's tallest wooden observation tower.
I can stop this at any time if you want me to.
Come summer, people flock to Lake Michigan beaches. Surfers, we call it the Malibu of the Midwest.
They'll make Blackhawk County look just like this.
Resort hotels here and elsewhere in the county offer vacationers a choice of getaway destinations, including accommodations and golf courses with world-class reputations. Angered by the Sheboygan County Court.
So that's an option, I wanted to show you, um, what it looks like on the website. This is an example, um, of Hidalgo County in, uh, Texas. But this is their, the videos that they have. And so it just lives on the website, but when you click on it, for example, um, like Quality of Life, it then goes to this, they do have like a little tagline then, but then it goes to the videos like we just watched. Um, and then, uh, locally, they have also worked with, um, locally, Iowa, Fort Dodge and Fort Madison.
Excellent.
Um, well, it's a three-year agreement, but we do ha, we did, I worked with Mike, and he suggested a termination clause if needed, so that has been added to the agreement. And like I said, all costs for the video production are assumed, um, by CGI Digital. But then there is this welcome letter that they would like to put on our letterhead that they will use then to solicit marketing opportunities to local businesses. And we have the opportunity to vet the businesses they, um, choose to reach out to.
Okay.
And, uh, like I said, Andrea from CGI Digital is online if you have any questions that I can't answer.
You mentioned the the termination clause?
Mm-hmm.
For how long? Both parties, I assume, can terminate the contract at thirty days, ninety days, one year?
I think it's a wide open on this, that's the way we did this. So it's, it's anytime, you could just say the word.
And be done.
Yep, and that, that was just in case, you know, the way that it turned out, or the sponsors they got, or something like that weren't to our liking.
I guess that would be another question I'd have is how do they, what do they do as far as obtaining the sponsors and how many? Is there a number they're looking for, even though they'll do it without, it said, without doing that? Is there a certain process for people?
I'm happy to answer that, yeah, um, it's, uh, absolutely not. We don't have a contingency, so we don't have a certain number of businesses that have to sign up in order for the videos to be at no cost to the county. Um, the opportunity there, we feature twenty businesses around each video, so that's the maximum that could participate. If we reach that amount and we still had interest, we can even add in another video, uh, to make more room. Um, but that's, you know, where we would cross that bridge if we came to it. But, uh, we, no, we do not have a minimum or a threshold that we have to reach in order for it to be at no cost. So we assume the risk, um, and promise the pro, uh, the video production at no cost regardless. And that's how all of our partnerships work with our cities and our county partners.
Yeah, thank you, I was gonna say it'd be a nice problem to have, to have so many that you want to create another video, so.
Yeah, I mean, you never know, Warren County, Kentucky is one of our clients of similar in size, and, uh, we filled up every single spot on their project, and they have, I want to say, six or seven videos, and we're in the co, and conversations on adding another one because we, um, we're, we're, we're still having businesses even contact us. So you never know, uh, you know, we'll see, but the, we just don't, because we don't know what kind of response, we just want to alleviate the county from that concern of, you know, having to think of a certain number of businesses. Um, we're hopeful that we see a positive response, typically we do. Otherwise, this program wouldn't be offered still, because again, that's how our program functions, we assume all the costs, so. Um, but obviously, we typically do see, um, a strong response with all of our, um, video initiatives.
Thank you.
Hi Andrea, good to see you again. Uh, question, just on turnaround of time, how long does production, what, what does that sort of look like for us?
Um, so we really work at your pace, you kind of set the pace for the video production. If we were really on schedule, um, typically four to six months, it would be completed from when you have your very first production meeting, which would be within a couple of weeks of us having this, the agreement in, in your county entered into our system. Um, so that's what we would be hopeful for, but again, that can be pushed out depending on when you want to be filmed, and you would choose when you want to be filmed, you would choose the shoot date, we give you options. Um, but, you know, as far as what month and and when, I mean, that's entirely up to you. Um, we work at your pace in the fact that we do all the work, so we, we write the scripts. Obviously, we do all of the filming, the editing, the music, the narration, the film, the shot lists, and the filming locations we take care of. Um, but that's all approved by you throughout the entire process. So depending on how soon you get those approvals to us or read through those scripts we're writing, that also is going to factor into the timeline. But assuming that you're on pace, I mean, you know, you're, we're all fairly efficient moving along, we could definitely, within six months, have these videos complete and ready to go live on the county website.
And how long is your crew sort of onsite? How, how often are they here in the?
For filming, typically three full days. And that's from starting, you know, sunup till sundown, so they're filming all day long, collecting a lot of bureau outside of work hours as well. Um, but usually, we're able to collect all the necessary footage within that film, that shoot day. If we need any additional, then we also work with a lot of local videographers that we can hire to collect some footage, uh, at different times. Um, and anything that the county may already have in regards to photos or video footage, we can edit into the video tour as well.
Okay, I think this sounds like a good opportunity, it's fairly low risk, and we've got, if something should go wrong, we've got the out in the contract. Would somebody like to offer a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion or questions? Uh, hearing none, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, we'll move on to discussion, possible board action regarding cattle congress's, uh, funding request.
Good morning, uh, my name is Blake Hollis, and I come today as, uh, Vice President of the National Cattle Congress. Um, many of you are probably, well, I guess I should also point out, uh, fellow board members Mark Little and Corey Johnson are with me and as well as our general manager, Jim Cook. And I'm coming today to, uh, basically follow up on our application under the Community Services Funding Program that you all, uh, have in in play, and that we submitted an application for. Uh, many of you are probably aware that, uh, our organization has been in a process of sort of reorganizing itself, reimagining our future. Uh, we have significant, um, decline in the infrastructure of the cattle congress grounds and major capital requirements to, you know, kind of revitalize the grounds and and imagine our future. So our board, uh, continues to endeavor to kind of wrestle with those things and and prepare a plan on how to move forward. And our goal is to do so, um, with a plan that that minimizes the need to, um, to try to tap into, um, you know, basically grants and and, um, requests from the community, community. But, uh, unfortunately, we, we obviously need to lean into those resources from time to time. And we find ourselves currently in a situation, having had, uh, pretty rough weather for last year's fair, uh, and had to, uh, kind of a down year in terms of attendance, uh, slow winter, and, uh, you know, cash flow requirements that are tight, uh, where we were just kind of wondering what the status was with our grant. Um, as we emerged from the kind of the lean months of the winter and and, uh, into a spring that actually we have a very full schedule and a lot of events planned, a lot of great things happening and exciting things around the corner for our, our organization. Uh, but just basically wanted to, um, you know, answer any questions that you all have about our application and and open it up for discussion and kind of just get a status update on on where we're at with that.
I think the amount, and and not being real familiar with the application right now, I didn't review that before this morning, but I was gonna say what the amount requested was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, um, if you would itemize or describe, I guess, a little bit what's your plans for that three hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, so, um, the application kind of detailed that out. Uh, we had, uh, identified within that application, um, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand and one fifty-five for heating and utilities. Um, there were several different programs, educational programs that we kind of detailed within that. I can't give you the exact total of the, sum of those, but it would be somewhere in the ballpark of, I think, forty thousand or so. Um, job training, uh, and an intern, uh, that will help us with our marketing. So we have a, we have a, an intern that is, that is working on those activities and kind of helping us to, uh, to, to work on our brand and and marketing, reaching the community, and and fostering, um, more activity on our grounds. Uh, employment opportunities and fair security, uh, and then, uh, helping with our, the, helping us service our debt. We have on April first every year, uh, an annual mortgage payment that is kind of the, that, that sort of marks the, um, the height of our cash flow crunch, um, coming, as I said, out of the lean months of the winter and then, and then having a, a big mortgage payment on April one, uh, that comes around every year. Um, but I would add to, this, so those are the things that are detailed in our application. I would add to that, that we, um, were recently required by the fire marshal to install sprinkler systems, um, a sprinkler system in our Pepsi Pavilion, which I believe costs about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that was sort of an unexpected, um, capital requirement that, uh, sort of came out of left field for us and has been, um, you know, put us in a little bit of a predicament, and, you know, especially when coupled with the fact that we had a pretty rough fair last year with, uh, with weather, as it turned out.
I know that there is, so there are some state limitations on, um, we, we can't just donate to an entity. And so it's gotta, we have to enter a contract, um, with with any groups that that aren't a governmental entity. And so that, I think, provides some challenges for the capital stuff that, but I want to see. And so that, I think, provides some challenges for the capital stuff, but I want to see, there's gotta be some way that we can help out somehow, though.
There is actually a code section that allows for funding of fairs. So this qualifies, we've looked into that.
Okay.
I think Mark had brought it up a few months ago that it was possible, and Mike then was reviewing it, and that too, there were certain stipulations that, but we were certain that cattle congress probably met all those requirements.
Yeah, the only one that was left was whether we had the acreage requirement of it, and I confirmed, or you confirmed, we got that.
Yeah, I think it was 10 and a half acres, if you had to meet that requirement.
Yeah, and I didn't know for sure from driving by if they did or not.
We've got about 40, 56 legal acres, I believe.
It's plenty big.
Yeah. Well, I think there was some discussion too, whether or not, Mike, as far as ownership and sometimes the parcels and everything, but it looked like everything staying intact. There weren't any plans for selling anything off or doing any changes like that, so.
Correct.
Yeah, more than exceeds, okay.
I was driving by the other day, and I was thinking of how at-risk all those historical buildings are. I mean, it is, you know, it's something that's been a generational asset for this community. And so I reckon, I appreciate all of you for sticking with it during what I know has been a really tough go at it for the last number of years.
It is difficult, and I would say that, you know, our, our sort of reorganized board certainly hopes to kind of honor the storied past of the National Cattle Congress and yet, you know, plant a firm foot forward as we look progressively to the future.
We haven't actually reviewed any of our current requests as far as that. We've been busy, I guess, in all the other stages of budget and haven't got to that too, but I thought, yes, yours being a different request, I guess, from our typical, but still something we'd need to consider, I guess, during the timeline. Your timeline's probably fairly immediate, as always, right? Yeah, I was gonna say, it's most request, but, you know, is anything that you'd like, I guess, to share with us, I guess, with upcoming? Now, you mentioned the sprinkler system. Has that been completed, or is that in?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
Jim Cook, yeah, the sprinkler system is completed, the alarm system is not yet, so we're still a little bit on that, and just getting those final payments done to those organizations as well, so.
And so how much was the alarm system? Maybe I didn't?
Well, that was included into the total package of $120,000, because you can't have one without the LR, or the notification for the fire department, so.
And can you speak to some of the kind of different programming you've been trying? I know that I've seen, and I appreciate this as a, as a local musician looking for places to play, that you, there's been like different rock concerts, like local rock concerts recently produced and such, and?
Yes, there's, we're always trying to change with, you have to, for what we do, and nothing's a guarantee from year to year for what type of events you can bring in, but we're trying to get some shows in there. Unfortunately, our arena doesn't fit today's standards for what these larger shows are seeing, like you're seeing going to Des Moines, Cedar Rapids. And that's in the planning of our future as well, because we do believe we're an economic impact for the community and the county, and surrounding counties as well. Now, we're actually moving into arena football this year. We worked on that in 2019, and it took this long to make that activated. And that's something that is, I look for it to grow and continue for several years, and we're looking forward to that arrangement we have with them as well.
Right.
Thank you.
I think, I mean, I almost see this as outside of the community services, since this is, this is our county fair. And I'm supportive, I mean, I want to, it's like I said before, this has been something that's been near and dear to people for generations. I know even, you know, my mother grew up on a farm an hour east of here, you know, they always went to cattle congress growing up. And so it's, it's something that's important to this community, and people, people don't want to lose. And so it's, I'm certainly supportive, I want to, so I don't know that we need, how much longer we want to wait on it, on this, but it's?
And maybe we could still do it during our budget cycle, I would think, since we have some discussion left to do on that, but we could certainly put it on a future agenda. Unless somebody wants to do it today, I thought, I guess, the application, see if we have questions or anything for them too, if they don't mind, but.
Yeah, I don't want to, if we were, give this a few more weeks, I think is good, if that's reviewable, but I, because I understand kind of the critical time period that they're in, and we'll figure out, it's kind of what is the appropriate level that we can support, support the cattle congress at.
Typically, we've tried to do this during budget sessions at least, so we can get some direction for what the next year is or whatever, but I suppose we could adjust the timeline as well.
Right.
I appreciate your, your sort of desire to kind of accelerate the timeline, and we would definitely appreciate that. I would also encourage any of you, if you have some time, to reach out to Jim or myself, and we would love to bring any of you through our grounds and kind of talk about what's going on in greater detail, answer any questions you may have. But yes, we would certainly appreciate receiving any funds that you would be able to send our way as soon as possible.
All right. Board, do we have any further discussion or questions for the folks today? All right. All right, well, thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us. All right, we'll move on to item nine. This is work session, discussion, possible board action, discussion, all aspects of the fiscal year '25 budget.
All right. I'm sorry, it's gonna take me just a minute here. Went faster than I expected you to. Just trying to get, I have decided it works better to get them all open before we start, so.
So is anybody in need of a brief recess?
Yeah.
All right. All right, we're gonna take a brief recess.
I apologize.
That's all right.
Why not?
Yeah.
Might need her for the work department.
Unachievable.
We get all done, person's back.
Yeah, yeah, we see nothing, yeah, we want to change, so.
We don't know what we did?
Yeah.
Yesterday, I sent to her, she was talking about reviewing the capital, and I said, you put one list that just says department, or instead of, how many do I have to change? That's wrong. You mean just for 25? I think 25 is all any of us can do right now. We'll get to the other stuff later, but yeah, it's just like, please, if there is something somebody wanted to question or pull out, it was just.
Well, you know what, that's not, there's no intent to profit, and that's not egg property, so.
Oh, we don't have grant? Yeah. He only does summarize minutes anyway. That's funny. I thought, well, I can save it till the end, when we do our information for the board, after seeing Rory's email on the buildings. I thought, let's, unless anybody has an objection, let's do a work session on it next week, just to, unless we got someone that comes up with this, and we do more tensions, like just to say, let's go over those.
Yeah, I think so. I'd be curious how much lighter, you know, recessed one is going to really bring in?
I know. That's what I thought, we gotta put, well, one day I joked with them, and I said, I want to know what it costs everybody that doesn't have a window down the windows. So I said, it's not just that, but I said, we need to.
I was briefly theatrical writing.
See, okay.
So I can design a song.
Well, that's okay. I said, when I went into Carol's office, Carol had one of those, you know, the TV screen that becomes the picture, it looks like the little.
But I like the idea of just getting everybody out of their freaking.
Yeah, well, and I said, I think, just like Kathy's trying to talk about something at that point, it's over years doing it and working toward that, so it's just like, start to the conversation, so.
We're waiting for Mike.
And they're here.
I'll call this meeting. Black Heart County Board of Statuaries, back to order. All right, we are in discussion, possible board action regarding all aspects of the fiscal year '25 budget.
All right, so this worksheet's probably very familiar to everybody, but it has been a while since we looked at it. So I'm gonna remind us how this worked. I first put this together, just showing increases in non-personnel budgets, just as a starting point to kick off discussion, because as you remember, we had, we were over our 350 cap by 1.617 million dollars when this started. And so I was trying to spur ideas about how we might reach that cap that we need to be under. One of the things that we did, we did ask the departments to tell us what the impact would be of a 3% reduction in funding. So that's kind of the second section. And then to the far right, I had, we had made some suggestions prior to February 29th, and on February 29th, we adopted a number of them. So I don't think I'll go through all those, but the first two pages of the handout in front of you is all the ideas that we have already adopted. So all those things left us $98,000 short of getting to that, under that 350 cap. So we were still, we have a few decisions we still need to make. And if you go to page three of what you have, other items that I have come up with at this point are listed out there. One of the things, as this evolved, we realized we were going to do the logo project before July 1st, and so we had, we had reduced that budget. Gabby's latest revised budget was $24,000, and I hadn't reduced it all the way to the $24,000 yet, so I did that. Then, that 1273 is just what it takes, I will find it somewhere in a board operating item to get us down to the 350. The health department, as Caitlin and I worked through some things, we realized, if you remember, she had said there was $20,000 that they didn't think they needed. Well, we subsequently found the notes that that is for a well-marked award they received, so, and her fin, because Matt had left during this process, he had budgeted that, but it hadn't gotten really into their notes, and we eventually figured that out. So I am suggesting that we reverse $10,000 of the 20, so there's still a $10,000 cut there. And the health department had already substantially reduced their operating items, you know, based on direction from their separate board. So they have, they really have reduced quite a bit. So I put half of that back, I'm suggesting you do that. And I think we did talk about these last week. I did some cleanup on the way the 60-40 fund was budgeted to true up the revenue more to be what we really think will be received for fines. I still have to use $5,130 of that restricted fund balance to pay all the expenses we're obligated to pay. That's on the 60% side, actually, but that's all in here. And as I was going through entering things into the software, I realized we hadn't, I hadn't included overtime that's needed for the traffic grant, so I'm adding that back. But then we also discussed last week, asking the sheriff's department to reduce $50,000, hoping for non-personnel line items, just, and the reason for that is because I've already budgeted $1 million of what I would call vacancy money. So we need, between all our departments, we need, we hopefully will have $1 million in vacancies, and that's just the salary part, that is not the benefits part, that's another $400,000. So then I, we had talked, and you had actually suggested that we move 213,000 of deputy salaries to the rural fund. After talking with sheriff's office, I am proposing, and particularly since I found these other items that we needed to adjust, I'm suggesting instead of increasing the rural by 213,000, I'm suggesting we increase it by only 106. That, your residential taxes are going up at a rate higher than everything else, and I, I wanted to give you some options if you want to bring that down a little bit. So that's why I'm suggesting that. Let's see. I also needed to add the use of fund balance for the attorney's office to get that to balance out for the cost of one deputy that they are funding from fine collections. And then through a number of other changes, through negotiations, I've gone back now and tried to true all that up. I needed, I could, that was a cut of $78,000. So the net of all those things brings us down to the goal that we needed to reach to get under the 350 cap, should you elect to adopt all of those. So that's really what was happening in the general fund. I believe we've already talked through the changes in the general supplemental fund that are on the bottom half of that page. The only change that would be new there is I reduced the portion of employee benefits for those rural deputies, because since I cut that in half, I also needed to cut the transfer of benefits in half, so that actually increased this slightly. But I think all the other items are items you had really already discussed and adopted. And I don't.
So the 21,828 is what you're speaking to?
Actually, it's that 33,032, the bottom number, that's the change.
All right, thank you.
I think all those other numbers, I believe they're the same.
Okay.
And I thought we maybe want to go ahead and look through the other two funds before, and then maybe you want to come back and make some choices on these. Since this, these choices really are interrelated, both to rural and secondary roads, that's why I think it makes sense to go ahead and look at those now. So we go to the next page, and you, you had adopted some of these already, but not all of them. So we had, I'm adding back the 50,000 of deputy fuel, I think you'd already pretty much agreed to that, although actually, we did not take any formal action on rural fund. I'm sorry, I was mistaken.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, I'm wrong, so we do need to do all of these. So there's moving 50,000 of fuel in, which really makes sense, that is not even all the fuel used by the rural deputies, but since they are mostly driving the rural parts of the county, that seems to make sense to me. And then, again, we had moved the 213,000 of deputies, that's the second line, then down a few more lines, you can see I'm adding back 106, so I'm reducing what we're adding back by 106. And let's, and the same with employee benefits for those deputies, the 66,000, and then reducing that in half to 33. The others, we did talk about potentially reducing the library funding and the soil and water funding, and I know there was some conversation at our last meeting about not doing that. They're just on here because that's what we were talking about. So then, to get it, I just was trying to see where I could go. I thought, I can get it, I can get a residential rural increase to just under 5%, it's gonna be at 4.95% if you also reduce the transfer from the rural fund to secondary roads, if we reduce it by a total of 72,360. That would be the only change really being recommended to secondary roads. And I, I do think Supervisor Hall had suggested earlier, the DOT does budget, does suggest you budget very conservatively for road use tax, so, you know, we never know what the economy's going to do, but based on past history, that revenue might be higher. And our departments, actually everyone, budgets fairly conservatively, but the secondary roads does as well. I think, I expect that if they don't have that 72,000 in revenue, it really won't negatively impact their operations, so. But again, those are just choices for you to make, it just depends, you're starting out, I think, at about an 8%, over 8% increase in the rural fund. out, I think, at about an 8%, over 8% increase in the Rural Fund. Should you choose to adopt all those, you, you can reduce that to 5, if that's just what you want to do, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've had that like 95% for many, many years, correct?
Um, no, it's, it bounces around, actually, it was...
Well, we did have a couple, we raised it to 100 a few years ago.
And it's been at 90 quite often, so this would take it to 92 and a half. I think historically, 90% is a very common percentage. And of course, that percentage, the dollars that go with the percent change as it grows, so, but you're right, the last, or a couple of years in there, you were at 100. I believe last year, we reduced it to 95. Yep. So, those are really all the changes that... And I think if I jump to the chart, you can just see, if you adopt all the changes that we just talked about, it gets you down to meet your 350 cap, and does the best I can do, I guess, right now, to reduce other things. So it's, your residential's at 1.31% increase, commercial is the painful one, at 23% increase, industrial at 3, multi-residential at 7.87, but remembering they've been on a dramatic decrease over the last number of years. But that does bring the rural residential to an increase of 4.95, and then the actual ag land would be a reduction of 3.78.
Well, we're okay with the 350 cap, pretty much, right? That's what was proposed, if you had a minute, you said that made the 350 cap. With those changes.
With, with the changes on this list, yep.
Sheriff, the Health.
Yes, and that, that does not have an impact on secondary roads transfer at all, I left that one at 100% in the, from the, the General Fund transfer to secondary roads.
All right, do you first want to take action on just accepting the recommendations to meet the 350 cap?
I'd be comfortable, I'd be comfortable making that motion.
Do you need more clarity on this, on the, on the motion grant?
It depends on what you want, you know, if you just want to say that the recommendations that are included in the budget to achieve the 350 cap were approved, we'll just make it that general if that's...
Okay.
What's the total of those, Michelle? But, you have them listed there.
98,000 the net, I think, because that's what I needed to get to, yes.
98?
Yeah, I think so.
I just hate to say 98,000, that's incorrect, but I just meant, so if you think that's correct, otherwise.
Lots of combination, something's going up, something's going down.
Right, that's why it's, yeah, I didn't, I guess I never added those separately, I can look it up here.
Well, since we've been hitting targets, we're trying to hit targeted numbers.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions on this? Hearing done, roll call please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution carries. So now, back to the Rural Fund. I mean, the, I, I do want to leave the, the water funding, the soil and water funding at the 10,000, just because I think we get a lot for that. And that brings a lot of, a lot of potential federal dollars to the county through their work.
I'd agree there, I'd also like to see us leave the libraries and get to, get there. That silk puts us, instead of at 4.95, I think just above, maybe just a little over 5. Maybe if you can speak to, if we didn't, if we didn't make the reduction as outlined on the libraries and the soil and water, what would that rural rate be?
Give me just a second, I should have done that and I didn't.
Yeah, I was thinking some of those changes and what they actually, yeah, I click $2 here will make a difference. And whether or not it's worth it to us to make the changes, not for those, sorry, but
Let's see.
I mean, the 15,000 between those two entities isn't a huge budget impact, but it does impact their programs mentally, so.
It does, and, and that's where I look at too, the, the impact of some of these on the services we provide, and when we are helping others and other groups, and that's a good thing, we see it as a very positive thing, but I just meant to, I don't know.
And I, I know some of the soil and water commissioners actually donate their own money to fund the work, and I couldn't imagine having to write a check to Black Hawk County to fund what we're all doing here, and so.
Well, we welcome that.
That's the next agenda item, right? And I think in future years, if, if there did become a compression in the Rural Fund, that's where we could adjust.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But it seems as if that fund has the capacity, and it really is a pretty minimal dollar difference.
You had proposed, Michelle, so...
I'm sorry.
You, you...
Gosh.
You had proposed previously, I guess if we were to hit a 5.54, or 5.35, or a 4.95.
Yeah, I just, that 22,000 is at the bottom of that, that's my problem with that.
I just wondered, yeah, when we looked at those, what that meant.
That's why I thought I...
Because there were some things that, I'm thinking into secondary roads, that they had proposed changes, that we were having some objection to as far as culverts and the rock, and what was the other, there was one other improvement, something we were trying to think of pilots.
I'm saying, suggesting, I don't think they have to do any of those.
No, I know, we, I want to make sure we know them, I guess.
I like that experimental culvert approach.
I think you're gonna be slightly over 5, I...
I watched a silly amount of videos of them doing that to the zero lines.
Correct, that was the other one, I guess.
But when you old, old house, you, you research those things.
Yeah, you know it well.
I would say you're gonna be at about 5.1, 5.2% increase to residential, ag, rural, I should use the word rural, rural residential, if you add back that 15,000.
Guess I'd make, I'd make the motion on this Rural Fund, as recommended, excluding library and soil and water reductions.
So what are you thinking, Michelle, as far as the Rural Fund impact?
I think it's just, like, maybe 5.2%.
And so what does that translate to, anything for the department?
What, so which department?
The secondary roads is what you said.
Well, so that impact, it reduces their revenue, if you will, by the 72,000. But I really, I don't know that you need to reduce their expenses for that, I mean, you can, you can say you're gonna increase the estimate of road use if you want to. I mean, I realize we're rolling the dice, but we're having to do that everywhere this year, and I, I'm afraid that's gonna become a more normal. I just couldn't, I couldn't get rural, you're back at 8% if you don't want it to, secondary roads, I just don't know what else. There's a lot in that Rural Fund to reduce, other, you know, you've got the sheriff, you've got the rural deputies, you've got dispatch, there's a few board things, but not, not a lot, so there just, isn't much there that can be changed. And the other thing to remember is the local option tax that now is, can be used for construction. I mean, not that it wasn't before, but it was also paying interest that we aren't having to pay right now, so, they, in a way, we are getting more construction, and the local option receipts appear to be growing, coming in very strong, hope that continues, so.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate.
Kathy, do you want to rural speak to?
Is kind of what we need rural services for.
Yeah, exactly, right.
And, and if that is, in fact, where the rural costs are, don't, Kathy, please.
Like I mentioned several weeks ago, we would reduce the CAD computer, we would probably reduce our spot rock, because that's, you know, that's a roll of the dice as far as the weather will be next, in the spring of 2025 is, is, you know, is what we use the spot rock for, or this fall. And then, we would probably reduce, or omit the culvert lining, rather than, if we're, if we need to be down to 75,000, those are the three items we would choose from, and keep the money still in the crack filling, that's important, that we continue to keep moisture and water out of our, our pavements as they deteriorate or age out. So that's probably the three options right now that we would look at, reducing the computers, the spot rock, and then the culvert lining project. And it's not that we wouldn't replace a culvert, we just thought that we would try this new technique, we could, we could try that next year, or a date into the future. It looked to be less disruptive, we wouldn't have to tear up the road, for example, a deep culvert was what we were going to try that on, but we, we can try that next year.
Maybe.
Right.
Hopefully next year's not as painful as this year. What are your suggestions, Michelle, if we leave some of those in there, since those are rural, like I said, when we talk about deputies and the things that are rural expenses for rural areas.
Right.
Have these roads as well.
Yep, that's why I've given you what I've given you, and I put back up the engineering operations budget. And you can see, for example, for fiscal '23, our road use tax, we actually received nearly 4.8 million, or, but we're budgeting to receive 4.5. And there's no guarantees we're gonna get that for, you know, that 4.8. You can see the current year, we projected to receive 4.4, again, already, we had received 4.8 the prior year. And the, the amount that's budgeted for this year actually is very close to what we received in fiscal '22. So, that's the only reason that I'm suggesting that. And the local option, we had thought we would receive, I think we budgeted 1.68 for this year for construction, for '24, for '25, that's over 1.9, so there, there is more there for the construction.
How much does that equate to in dollars?
300,000.
Right, yeah.
Can we look maybe a little bit on the dollar impact on, on residential, rural residential?
We can, I'm gonna go back to this, the longer form, I think, so... Here it is, it's $25 on a home that was valued at $100,000 in the '24 cycle, their increase is $25. And that's what takes to the 4.95, so, you know, you're slightly more than that.
I think, because the dollar amount's not scary, it's the, it's the percentage.
Percentage, you're, you're correct.
And it's, keep in mind, you know, rural, the rural residents don't pay the city taxes, yet they certainly use all the infrastructure here in, in these communities, and so, that's why we don't want to transfer more things out of this to the general, because those people are already also paying an urban tax, and then they're paying our tax rate, and so it's...
Honestly, now, now with the 350 cap, we really aren't able to without cutting something else, it's just, it's difficult, it's really difficult.
And I don't, yeah, I think it's a point of pride, like the, the quality of our secondary road system, here in Black Hawk County, it's, we just, just got an award last week for it, and so it's, I don't want to see us go back on that, and this, even though it's, I mean, small, I just, I just worry it might be a slippery slope, like to set further boards up to keep going down on, on road improvements, then we might be in the situation that people were in 20 years ago here.
Yeah, you're right with the, the point of pride, I was gonna say, we have some of the best roads in the state, and that's been something that we've been able to accomplish, yeah.
I mean, no offense to Beacon County, but I don't need a sign to tell me when I've exited from Black Hawk to another one.
No, that's true.
I think everything we do is a priority, that's what makes it different.
Right, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, and rural residents would certainly not object, I would think, as far as to our roads and our deputies too, that they want.
Right.
As far as that's something important to all of them, yeah, I'm sure, and that's exactly what we're trying to cut.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's still a pretty good bargain for the, the services that the county provides, I think.
So if we leave those services in, and you probably need time for those calculations to make sure, you know?
I mean, I can't, I think I'm on a, not give exact amounts today on the rural, but it won't, you know? I just want to make sure I have all my numbers right.
Yeah, for sure. You made, you said some reductions on the, the fuel benefits for...
That, the fuel is really just moving it from the general basic levy to the rural levy.
To the rural, okay.
We did not, yeah, and the same, the deputies again, is just a move from the 350 levy to the rural, so, the reductions in that fund, yeah.
Again, not in our country.
Again, yeah. Really, yeah, the only reductions were the external agencies of the libraries and soil and water, and I, and then the secondary roads, because we'd already cut, you know, we've asked the sheriff for the 50,000, but out of the general basic, because we needed to get under that 350 cap, so. But yeah, soil and water, you know, they were only getting 2,000, so even if you, and I, they, they hadn't, didn't know yet how, what they could maximize by increasing that to 5,000. It's only $5,000, but it is two and a half times what they've gotten before. It is 10,000, I'm sure the 10,000 does let them hire more help to get those, the conservation grant, there's, as they shared with us, there's a lot of conservation funding available right now. That would be for individuals, it's, it wouldn't be something, you know, it wouldn't be projects, I don't think, that the county takes on, but I think if they can help write grants or do the documentation...
Yeah, they're working, they're working directly with, with landowners.
Right, they'll, there could be a huge impact to water quality and things in our county if we can do that.
I don't think that one was probably the one we're disputing though, right?
No, I don't think so, that's...
Yeah.
So this is all off the premise that we're, we're agreeing with the state's recommendation on revenue, on, on...
Right. That's why I'm suggesting...
If we were to exceed that, if we were, if we were to grow the expectation of revenue, that alleviates need to take out the culvert.
I know what I'm suggesting.
Do all this.
Yeah. And if history's prologue? And if history's prologue, we're likely going to exceed at least what, what that number was.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not suggesting that we increase it to the level it even was, that we got in '23.
Sure.
I'm just increasing it the level to fund what they've requested to fund their expenses, basically.
Yeah, because I don't think most are expecting it to stay as high. This is kind of a record year for interest. Well, we, it's not something we typically like to do either. But I'm, when we're talking about services and things, that concerns me, that we're not doing. And, and I know we have the reserves we do. And while we are planning to use those for capital, we could still provide services and know that's a backup plan for us. Right? I mean.
Yeah.
For that. May not be a precedent, something we like to set.
Yeah. Are we talking about rural though, or are you talking about general? Because rural reserves are different.
Yes.
And secondary roads also has reserves. But yeah, so there's three different pots there that we would be.
And you're impacting that, what, about, it was like $150,000 or something or more? How much are you impacting by the three?
There was the option.
Three. Three options you could impact them. One was a cut, reduce to 95%. One was a reduction.
So just the secondary roads? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm looking at specifically, is secondary roads. Yeah.
Okay. So it's 72,000 brings it down to 92.5%. So depends where you want to take that. Depends if you're going to take it out of rural reserves or secondary roads reserves. I think that's what you're talking about.
And then there was the general you mentioned too, right?
Or, or pretty much capped it, right?
I, okay, but I did, I did not reduce.
Okay, that one you did.
Transfer from general into secondary roads. We are at the maximum.
All right.
Hundred percent there. So that's why I was confused. So we really are talking about the difference between the rural fund and the secondary roads fund. Or just taxing, you know, you can have the taxes set higher for rural.
And how much is it set up higher? You said you'd have the amount. What would that be?
If you're talking about, let's just say it's going to be that five and a, five and a half-ish. Well, maybe more if you're going to add back the 70. Let's see. I wish I'd have done this in a different order.
Yeah, sometimes we've had different scenarios, kind of like.
Well, I know. I tried to ask.
I just, this is what we do. This is what you get. This is what we do. This is what you get, just to make it easier for you probably to not have us do it at the last minute. I know the easy thing is to look and say with the suggestions, let's just accept them.
No, I'm, that's not the intent at all. I'm trying to give you options. I just don't, I just, I should have probably done it in a different way. So you're look, you're probably looking at.
Because it was that, to that point of the 550, that's.
5.54, yeah, that, that 5.54 increase does include reducing the transfer by 50,000. You put 50,000 back, you're probably at over six.
Okay.
And then the only thing you would be, then what you would be doing is you, you're moving the sheriff's fuel and you're moving, you're increasing the allocation of rural deputies by 5% from 75 to 80. That's what the 106,000 increase to deputies is. It's, it's increasing it to 80% of that allocation. And that, I think that increase would be somewhere in the six, 6% range. So yeah, that would, that's certainly another option.
Well, I know Kathy needs to wrap up a budget probably for her, your five-year plan or whatever you have to submit. So some of these decisions are important to you, I guess, for us to make, right? Timing wise.
Yes, we need to submit our five-year plan and our budget by April 15th to the Iowa DOT to be in compliance with the code of Iowa.
So that means we'd need it on next week's agenda or something close.
Yeah, we were kind of hoping maybe we could either put it on the agenda for April 2nd, or I won't be here April 9th, but I would, would be back on April 11th if you, if you were to have a meeting on that Thursday.
Okay, thank you. I knew there was a timeline. You'd sent us an email, but I couldn't remember what it was. Thank you.
I guess, like I said earlier, the, the dollar amount itself wasn't, wasn't scary. The actual, the actual dollar impact on residential homes. And, and so I, I still, I think it's still a pretty good deal for them to be able to increase library funding, have more services for, for soil and water for, for residents, as well as maintain the high-level expectations that we have quality roads here. So I'm honestly comfortable with not fully reducing that, that rural transfer.
I, yeah, obviously, my position is I'd rather not, but yeah. And the impact you're talking about for hitting the rural people, it's like the benefit is also the.
I know the potential scenarios that Kathy mentioned, you know, the, the getting one more year out of CAD computers was the only one that I was really comfortable with. But it's.
I think she only recommended cutting one, and that's because we changed the position.
Yep.
It's in their budget and they don't need it.
Yeah.
But that's the only one I saw too, that was one.
Yep.
But yeah, I mean, you know, Kathy has a budget file. We, you also have a budget publication that we need to get to the paper so that we can have our budget hearing. So.
Yeah, I'd like to make this decision today if we can.
Yes, it would be nice to do that. So I think that way the budget publication will hopefully match or be pretty close to what you're going to adopt, hopefully on the 18th.
And then we could, if we find out, I guess, with you looking at numbers and reassessing, I guess, and making sure they're correct, like you said, and doing, we would be able to change anything we could by next week if we had to. Because I'm assuming you'd make those corrections.
Only go down. You can only go down. So once I put it in, there's no going back up.
Yeah. I just mean, we've got room. I know we're pushing lines, but it's like we've got room to make corrections and changes.
I don't know that they'll hit, if, if we're going to have the hearing on the 18th, I don't, the courier, now they're telling me they want six days to sit on this after I send it to them before they get it into a paper. So I, I don't have very many days left, honestly, to get that publication to them. Because it has to be in the paper a solid 10 days prior to the date of the hearing. So I, I think you should today select the things that you all agree on, and then maybe we're, we do publish it at the higher rural rate.
Yeah.
You know, and you can reduce that later, should you choose to. You can do that anytime during the hearing if you wish. But I think the publication, it would be better to, to get that settled today so that I can get that done.
Yeah, the higher number, yeah, I'm good with that. And see if we hear from our.
I was kind of wishing, like Carlos was stayed.
So was that to be a motion?
Yeah, I think so.
I think we have agreement, but not in. Did you understand that motion, Grant?
Oh, is there a motion?
Well, I think, I think I might, so I could try restating it, that we would adopt the suggestions for the rural fund with the exclusion of any reduction in funding in the transfer to secondary roads and no reduction to the libraries and no reduction to soil and water.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
All right, who wants to offer that motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any further discussion, questions?
Yeah, I've just got one more. So actually, Michelle, we're not going to, we're going to publish this, but we're not going to reduce it then?
It's going to, it will be reduced somewhat because we are going to, yes, because I think, I think I published it at increasing the rural deputies by that 213 plus $66,000. So I'm going to cut that in half. So it will come down about 140,000.
And we are able to reduce. It's like Tom's kind of asking the question.
Correct.
It's, yeah, we can't increase it, but.
No, we would not be able to increase once I publish, but we can continue to decrease. But you would have a reduction from the previous publication of that 140 unless you choose not to do that either. But that means, okay, the, so the problem with that is then we have another, we have a, well, no, we don't. That would, you're right. You could choose to do that if you wanted to. Yeah.
I think, I think it's highly, if we publish this, I think it's highly unlikely we're going to reduce it. It'd be the first time. I agree with Chris, the theory of the rural residential, the cost, but I, it's hard for me to, it's still a pretty good increase. And I agree with the argument he made, but I've also heard it on the other side of the urban area. So I don't drive on the bridges in the rural area. Why do I have to pay for them? So I guess you got to kind of look at this as a county as a whole. I'm still struggling with that rural residential. Because I, I honestly think once this is published, we're not going to reduce anything. Now, I know as far as the libraries, I thought maybe that could have come down a little bit. I had an increase in my taxes in Evansdale on the library out here. So that would be an increase in Evansdale on the library and an increase in the county. And I'm assuming Waterloo, Cedar Falls, probably pretty close to the same thing. What was the total increase from last year to this year on the library, Michelle?
They're requesting a 12% increase in funding. It's just over $21,000.
All right. Is there any more discussion or questions for the board? All right, hearing done. Roll call, please, Mr. Vitter.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
No.
Jelka.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Short, yes. The resolution's approved.
Thank you very much. And then, so then we still have the topic of capital. So I have the fund balance worksheet again, you know, showing what happens if you just choose to do it all from fund balance, or if we bond for the things that are eligible for fund balance. And this, this is based on the assumption that because we hit that 350 cap this year, and not only hit it, I mean, we were over it by 1.6 million, that I'm assuming we're, that's going to be an issue going forward unless there is significant growth, which, you know, we might, I hope we do. I don't know. But, so I am making an assumption that we likely won't be able to afford to fund capital out of the 350, the operating money. That's why I've been focused on this so much. So I, I was asked to change the capital sheets to get all the FY '25 requests onto one, because I had it, you know, you had to look at different tabs for each department. So in your packet for today are all the requests just for the, just for the first year, fiscal '25. I was surprised. I had thought I would have to do a lot more work to have that. My goal is typically to have, to spend about the same in capital every year. So I was pleasantly surprised at what the departments turned in. Kind of roughly worked out that way. But this is what we've, we have in front of us for this year. And the total, it's a big total, over $5 million. However, one point, almost 1.3 million of that is grants. So it's not quite that extreme. We get down to about, you can see what we've got there.
Is Rory there yet?
He is.
Rory, what was the last time that we seal coated the jail? And what's the, what's the time period that we put that on?
I don't have the exact date memorized, but I believe we hit, the recommendation was to reseal it every five years. And we're, we're approximately two years over that, I believe. That'd be my best guess. We've done some spot sealant. We actually did some here this fall because we had an issue in our consolidated communications department. So we did some spot sealant there. And at that time, it was actually recommended to do the rest of the facility. About every other year, we do have it tested. And, and we're at that point now where they are making that recommendation.
Yeah, we've had trouble with that before. So I guess that's got to stay. How important is the fifth floor of the dome repair? Vinyl siding, recapping, window trim?
That, that one is actually just, it's addressing the fifth floor. We know we have some water issues around the dormers. Actually, this budget year, we are slated to take one dormer apart to see if we can figure out how water is getting into those areas. And so that is essentially re, opening up those dormers and redoing all of them on the fifth floor. And I, I would recommend that we do that regardless of whether or not we end up vacating the fifth floor. We still, it's still a project that I believe still needs to be done.
That is the source of our water leaks out there on the fifth floor?
We, we believe that much of the damage that we're seeing in the exam rooms, we've got a couple of restrooms, some offices. They seem to be concentrated around these dormers. So that's, that's what our suspicion is.
Mike, we had some, this is the question for, for Mike with conservation. We had, we received some additional dollars for that Hickory Hills project, for the Casey Lake project, correct?
As far as, we have Black Hawk County Gaming involved in that.
Yeah.
Also some private dollar donations for that. And then, of course, the state, it's a 7525. So the state pays for 75% of that, so.
So did you think that we could just look at some reduction on this, on the, on the capital part because some of those grant dollars are likely to, to cover?
They should. The 250,000 that we have in there, I, I do feel like we could pull that down some. I don't know what I'm comfortable with to say right now. One of the things that the gaming grant was based on a percentage of the overall cost, estimated cost. We were very, very fortunate that the bids came in lower than what we expected. And I'll say significantly lower. So we are in that conversation with gaming as far as if we stick with those percentages, will we, it was a $200,000 grant, you know, will all those funds be available? So that being said, and then I say I feel like we could pull that 250,000 down a little bit, I'm gambling a little, but, but I. bit, I'm gambling a little, um, but, but I think it's still a doable thing.
Michelle, what is the total amount of the capital compared to last year?
Last year...
Where's that graph you had?
It was 2.5 million last year, and it's about, the net is actually about 2.5 million this year as well.
Um, is any of this money in here, any of that's ARPA, or is that all straight capital tax?
Most of this is capital. There's 1.2 million from the auditors that's ARPA, but I've got that in a separate column on here. So, yeah, I've tried to put, if it's grant funded, it's in that column that says FY ' '25 grants. And then I've split it up between what probably has to come out of reserves versus what we could bond for should you choose to.
Where would, how much of this was eligible for bond? Let's see, oh, I see.
Oh, looks like 1.9 million.
Okay.
How do you determine, or when would, how would you determine? Like I say, is it important that we look at what we need to bond for the year now? Or can we do it as needed?
Yeah, so we've already really missed the chance, I guess I'll say, to increase the debt service levy, because we would've had to do all this prior, probably by February. So whatever, if we issue bonds during FY '25, the first year's interest will have to be paid out of debt service reserves, um, because it's all I can do. So that makes it less important, except that I would like to continue working on that to kind of figure out what our path forward will be for that. We might, it might be less expensive, for example, to only issue bonds once every two years, so then we would want to combine two years' worth of capital. And I, there's at least one project in here, and I think that is going to be the conservation one at Hartman. I think there's a time element, so I don't, I don't want to hold that one off probably for another year. That's that 450 for erosion control at Hartman. There's some other factors that Mike can refresh your minds about, about why, why we think we need to move forward with that one.
Yeah, and we are working with River Hills School because we would need access, uh, to that state preserve area, and that's what we're working on there at Hartman, is the state preserve area. We would need access through River Hills parking lot. They are working on, um, replacing that parking lot. And, um, so we have a timeline where we would get in, get out, um, with the equipment involved, and then they would do their work after the fact. And so that's what we're trying to, we're trying to be good neighbors to them. Worst-case scenario, we may be able to find another access point, um, but it will make it a little more, quite a bit more difficult.
Right. Also avoid potentially being billed for damaging a parking lot.
Correct.
Exactly. That's why I think we need...
Yeah. And I, and I really like that project, too. It's, um, yeah, and I think that, um, I do think we need to bond for what, what is eligible. Um, not so much because we don't have the strong reserves right now, but it's, it's because of future years' budgets going five years down the road. If, if, um, you know, I can, I could think of a wind project, I certainly wish we had the revenue from right now. Um, but we need, you know, you know, those are the good, it has to be big things like that, that are gonna change what, um, you know, actual taxable valuation is, is, is there for us. And so that's, I think, I think we need to consider bonding just because, uh, we need to be setting up the future years and future budgets, uh, to not be in what could be a dire situation.
And so I, I would actually hope, I think what we end up doing is we would maybe combine the '25 and '26 projects that we want to bond for and issue one issue probably sometime in '25.
Okay. I was gonna say, did you have a date? I wondered in mind or something to start doing that, yeah.
Then I would hope we would not issue in '26, but we might have to again then in '27.
Do we have a dollar amount for '26?
You, you do in the previous things, let's see.
Five-year plans.
Yep. And, and again, that's all just based on what's been requested at this point, so those can all change. Let's see. All right, we're sessioning here, maybe last little... So the summary. So we're looking at for '26, and this, it all depends on, now that is high because it assumes Kathy had requested to start funding a building with, by a big number. But that, to do that would require a referendum, and I don't know that we would issue the bonds over two years. We, there's a lot more work to be done on refining that if we want to issue that building. So, or issue the building, issue bonds to build the building, how's that? Um, so, yeah, you're looking at about two and a half, I think, maybe two, a little under two maybe for '26 if you do everything that's been requested. There were not as many requests in '26, but, you know, like, the voting machines probably is critical for that year and some other things.
So could, could the Hartman, um, project be included in a bond if we're doing a two-year?
That one is eligible, so that's the good news of that.
And, you know, it's, it would work out timeline-wise if we're...
I, I think so.
Okay.
I believe it does for what Mike's planning. That's why he's got it, um...
Just like, approximately like what month?
Yeah, that's what's...
Give or take three or four months.
Well, that depends on, really on you, when you would like to take a, you know, look at that CIP for both years to figure out what we put in the bond issue.
Okay.
You know, that timeline would be critical, kind of, for...
Yeah.
Making sure you include the ones for this year and yet...
Yeah, and, and we can, you know, we can do a reimbursement resolution and spend some funds on that conservation project should we need to prior to issuing them.
Would it be reasonable to be able to, to do that before the start of the fiscal year?
Uh, it is for me.
Okay.
If you're ready to, we could, yeah. To go through it, we probably wouldn't issue them until sometime later.
Mike's eyes rolling, I thought, yeah, one more project, one more timeline.
One more presentation.
One more timeline, right, Mike? Okay.
So, I see, just whatever the timeline is, we can come up that doesn't delay projects, but you said that we could, which we reimburse with, also...
Yeah, there's some actions we have to go through to do that, but we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good to know.
Yeah. You just want to be certain you're going to issue bonds if you're gonna do that.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of projects pushing us almost to do it, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So are we all comfortable with the 1.9 being for the most part the fund balance is what you were kind of proposing, correct? Similar to last year on the, and then the other being a combination of '25 and '26 bond?
Yeah.
Now, the, the one thing is, I did include engineering in this summary, but we typically fund that, most of that, well, in fact, everything for '25 Kathy's planning to pay for out of her operations, so that would not, that piece would not hit.
That tax, okay.
The general reserves. I should've put that in a separate section, it just now occurs to me.
Oh, and that's for all their projects that they've listed?
Everything that's listed for them for this year. So, yeah, that 1.2 million would come out of that 1.9.
Sure.
So you're looking at about 700,000 to come out of reserves.
Well, that's a lot better than we did last year, but...
But that's because we're splitting it, you know? You've got 700,000 from reserves, but then another chunk that we're talking about bonding, where last year we took it all out of reserves.
And we could at any point in time decide that we want to use fund balance for that until we bond, right? I mean, if there's something in need or something came up, or we know we have that to go...
You, you can, it's just that if we're going to issue bonds...
Yeah.
You're really not supposed to do that necessarily before you issue them with some limited exceptions, so that's...
Well, that's what I meant, limited, I guess, but...
Yeah, so we would, we would need to plan for that, I guess, maybe, maybe I should put it that way. If we wanted to start them before we got through the, and not necessarily the bond sale, but just the hearings and those, that piece of that process.
How many of these items were pulled out of the operating budget and put into capital?
Um, only one. The conservation shop roof repair for 20,000 is the only one that I think we changed in the budget process. Now...
Did the bulletproof vest, weren't they, and his operating under equipment over the years?
Yes, I was just about to say that. There are some things, particularly with the sheriff, you know, we typically have budgeted all his vehicles out of operating. Um, there is his vests, actually, everything that's listed under the sheriff, I think, has historically come from operating, and the vests are still in operating, but not much else. And the copier is still in operating. And I think there's still a grant for the radar unit, so I put that in the grant one. But, yeah, I don't believe the operating budget has the vehicles, the vehicle laptop replacements, and the jail transport vehicle will come out of the commissary fund. So, yeah.
So that bulletproof vest, for examples, will fall under capital or in their operating?
No, I put it under, it's under the operating. I, I could separate that, I could add another column to this for what's already in operating.
Okay, yeah, I see, I see now.
Yeah. Yep.
So those numbers under that column of, uh, operating fund balance, they're not included in your total for capital that you're talking about?
Not in the part we're gonna bond for, if that makes sense. Yeah. Most of it would be an addition, additional draw on fund balance, with the exception of the, the couple things you mentioned and I think one other. So most of it would be drawing on reserves. That's in the, the column that says from operating and fund balance, that 1.9. But 1.2 of the 1.9 is gonna come out of secondary roads operating budget.
Yeah, so you said some...
It left about 700,000, and then you've got, um, 50, probably about 80,000 that's already, already budgeted to come out of operating, so you're talking about 600 and some odd thousand that's gonna come directly from reserves this time, under this assumption. I mean, we can change that however you like, but, and my, the, the philosophy behind the way this was done is I put whatever was eligible for bonding in the bond column because I just needed to figure out what's gonna be eligible for bond funding, because there's quite a bit that isn't for counties now under the law. So equipment, for example, really, we're not gonna be able to bond for. That, that's why I think it's important maybe to preserve the reserves so that we can spend those down to buy the equipment that people are gonna need going into the future, because they're not gonna have another way to get it. If we don't have room under the 350 cap and we can't issue bonds, about the only thing that's left is kind of fund reserves. So I'm, I'm trying to be able to use that to keep funding equipment and those other kind of things as long as we can.
Well, do you know the dollar amount coming out of the reserves then, on this?
For '25, it, it's, let's just use 700,000 for conversation, it might be slightly lower than that.
Yeah.
So it was, it's about 700,000 that'll come out of general reserves, and then you've got the 1.8 to come out of bond money. Just wanted to check, I don't think it has anything in that column for engineering, but I wanted to make sure. Yeah.
So, so basically, you're saying these items will have to come out of the reserves every year rather than trying to put them back into the operating budget?
Well, you know, if there is, and, and it would take significant growth in taxable value, but if there is significant growth in taxable value, I would much prefer to be taking it out of there. I just, I am just concerned we're not gonna have that ability. You're gonna have to choose between funding employees, utilities, you know, those software, those kind of things that have to be in operating versus the capital. That, you know, it's not, those aren't exciting choices, but I think it's probably in our future. Without significant taxable value growth, I just have to keep saying that, but it would have to be significant. Large numbers.
So what's that take our reserves down to when you take out the, the different capital that you're gonna take out of that?
Yep, let's go back and look at, this was the fund balance spend down that we looked at. So if we do option two, which is on the right side of this, that's where I was splitting out and taking, and this is a little high. I think some things have changed, and the grant funding, it, it's hard to trace numbers back and forth, but if we take a million dollars out of fund balance, I, I put the turnover factor in here because I think we need to set that aside. One thing that's not in here at all is, and we talked about this early on, is setting aside some funding in case US Treasury comes in and doesn't like how we're using ARPA. Hopefully, the odds of that are very slim, but that, you know, I guess technically there is some risk out there that's not addressed in here, really.
I think since it went to every county and every city in the...
That's what I'm hoping, yes.
Everywhere.
And we're, yeah, we're trying to use it, you know, carefully, I guess, is the word.
And they can barely track their own stuff.
Yeah, we're trying to use it carefully, let, we'll just, you know...
Yeah.
I'm hopeful that won't happen, but that is another thing that's hanging out there. So what I'm showing you in that column that says from fund balance in option two, those are all things that don't qualify for bonding, and for now, I'm just assuming that we can't afford to get them out of the 350, because it just doesn't look promising to me today. Um, I hope that changes, you know, if some, you know, I'll try not to say the word TIF, but if something changed and some of that got released, that would help us a lot, but I don't know that it will. So that's...
The change in the cap?
The, well, the change in the cap, I don't expect that to happen, but if TIF, what would, what could impact this is if there are releases from TIF, because then that would give us more valuation that we could tax for 350. That, but I just don't know how likely that is. I'm just, you know, so wish I have, a dream. But, yeah, so, so if we, if we do it this way and we start bonding for the things that qualify, then, you know, I think we're, we're pretty good on capital, hopefully, through, at, you know, through at least fiscal '30, so we, we have several years, four or five years that we can keep funding equipment, repairs, you know, the things that we'd like to fund out of operating that if we don't have 350, we can't. So that's what option two's trying to show you. If you split up what people need and you bond for what you can, and you use reserves for what you can't bond for, and this does assume you can't get it out of your current operating, that...
That's maintaining the 45%, right?
Yeah, yes, and it is keeping the fund balance at...
No, yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't know if everybody is ready or willing to hear that today then now, or has time?
Yeah, I, I still have time.
Yeah, I've got a little bit.
Okay, great.
I'm gonna zoom into it.
Okay.
Got to take off?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Shortly after 11:30.
Can you stop sharing, Michelle?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forget that every time. Apologize.
Okay, I will be brief. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Thanks.
I've told you in the past, uh, just in the past few months about, uh, given you slides about how our, uh, current mechanic shop, it was built in, uh, 1959, and it's currently about 65 years old. It's cinder block construction. We've shown you some of the deficiencies in that building.
Building in progress.
And I really want to, uh, keep this in front of us, keep this on our radar. I don't have any illusions that this is going to be a fast or an easy... I don't have any illusions that this is going to be a fast or an easy process, especially after what we've heard today. But nevertheless, it's my, I'd like to be hopeful that maybe in three to five years we can get started on a new building or speak more seriously about a new building. So how do we get there? We've talked about a bond option and that's really not a very good option. That is, like Michelle said, it's not considered, this building is not considered a county necessity. In looking at some recent examples from Fayette County, for example, they did try to pass a referendum and they, this was, I believe, in 2018 or 19 and it did not pass. So they told me not to waste my time to look at this sinking fund as a better option. So our sinking, a sinking fund is simply just a means of us, of an agency, government agency, anyone being able to save money for a specific project over, over an extended period of time. We would propose to set up a sinking fund in our secondary road fund, so just another sub-fund in our secondary road fund. And we would like to give it a title, a new building, mechanic shop, something to that effect, just something to designate to ourselves, to you all, to auditors, that we would like to put aside money for a future building. We, we would like to be able to transfer money from the, the regular secondary road fund into this sub-fund or sinking fund. We would like to be able to budget money to put into that fund. About a couple of months ago, we thought that we might be able to put in $1 million from FY '26, $1 million from FY '27 into the sinking fund. That's probably changed a little bit just due to some of the discussions that we've had about our budget. But nevertheless, we would like to put money from the secondary road fund into the sinking fund. If we look at Fayette County as an example of how that can be done, they established their board of resolutions, excuse me, their board of supervisors passed a resolution in 2019 to establish the sinking fund with some insurance money that they had received due to, I believe, a fire in one of their outshops. So they established it with only $26,000. They continued to put money into that fund for about six years now. And that is how they are going to fund a new building that they will let this fall for about, they're anticipating about four to four and a half million dollars. Just like I say here at the, the bottom of the slide, this is an example of the resolution. Their current shop that I have shown you pictures of, that was, that was paid for with money out of the regular secondary road fund. It was not paid for with the sinking fund. Growing the sinking fund, we, we would like to receive money from the board of supervisors into the sinking fund. You could transfer money to us, you could establish your own sinking fund for buildings, for emergencies, infrastructure. Another option that I didn't put on the slide is perhaps you could buy a dump truck for secondary roads. You've done this in the past. If you would be able to purchase a piece of equipment for us, then we could use that money instead of taking that money of our, out of our operating funds, perhaps we could put that money into our sinking fund. So these are just different ways for us to get money for secondary roads, the engineer's office, to get money into our sinking fund to one day be able to replace our mechanic shop. I just wanted to put this other detail in front of you that Fayette County did. I'm not necessarily recommending that, especially considering some of the circumstances we are in right now. That Fayette County was able to persuade their board of supervisors that the interest earned from their sinking fund for their new shop, new buildings should be, go right back into that sinking fund. This is allowed by the Code of Iowa. They did ask for an auditor's opinion on that and they were given this, I can, I've given you information about how they would be able to keep that interest into that sinking fund. I know that that might not, I'm not necessarily advocating that today because then that might be less money coming from you as a transfer. So I'm just putting that in front of you. Just again, to summarize, we, we would like to establish a sinking fund with a resolution by you all at some point in the future, perhaps before this fiscal year ends, to put some money into the sinking fund to start it growing for the future of replacing our secondary roads fund, our secondary roads building, excuse me. Can I, this is a very brief overview. Can I answer any questions on this?
Can you do sinking funds if it is, can you move forward with planning and all of that for the sinking fund if there is sort of a dual track towards a referendum? Or do you have to pick one or the other?
I would think that we would not have to pick one or the other.
Okay. So I think, I think, I think the referendum is still possible here. It's, I look at other referendums that have come before citizens here in Black Hawk County and they've generally been successful over the last number of years. And so it's, but I think that it, it might need to be coupled with something that, that, that adds a clear new amenity for the, for the public, for, for everybody. That just, so it's, but I think, but I'm definitely, I'm supportive of the sinking fund. It's, it's a good, I think it's a good idea to be able to build up, but I, I'm not ready to completely give up on the referendum.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like you'd have to so that.
Yeah.
You could change your mind, but it'd just be kind of done in tandem, like you said, at the same time in deciding what. I like the idea and I think it would be a selling point to the public as well. The fact that you're putting in funding from another source and what you're contributing to it. It's not all looking to them for taxing it, so I think that's a positive. And one of the questions I'd ask Kathy was, you know, while she's looking at her specific area right now in the building, could we be changing, you know, would this impact like, no, you couldn't change? And she said, no, it could be, or you'd include other, if you wanted, other departments or something like that, if you could, even though those dollars would have to be designated for the roads and use because it was roads money. But yeah, I liked that idea of it as well, so.
Yeah, because, because things we still need to address, you know, we still need to address evidence intake. This, this might be putting it too far down the road for them, but it's, but it's, but it's possibility.
Yeah, I think additionally, I've, I've expressed to Kathy and to Mike and I think to you all, there's a number of you. I think conservation, a joint building there makes a lot of sense as well. And I think it, to your point, provides that, provides an option for a public amenity that maybe not otherwise exists.
Another option.
Another option.
Is there a timeline or anything as far as doing this or you, that you thought as far as, like say?
There does not appear to be any type of timeline.
Okay.
We, as we get to the end of our fiscal FY '24, we might see if we have monies left over in our fund balance, for example. Take a look at our fund balance and how it looks for the next five years, for example, as we go to with our five-year plan. We may consider coming back to you, asking for a resolution to put some money into the sinking fund.
Okay, that's like, as we get closer to year end?
Right.
Okay, and seeing what you'd have? And more questions or maybe we want more, some, another work session or something more if we have more? Okay.
No, that was rushed, but thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item B. This is a motion to direct to the finance director to advertise for a public hearing on the proposed Black Hawk County budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025 to be held on Thursday, April 18th, 2024 at 9:00 AM in Boardroom 201 of the Black Hawk County Courthouse, Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign?
Sorry.
All right, the motion carries. Any reports or information from the board?
Well, I just commented briefly on it, but I thought Rory had sent this email out to us just recently, I think it was yesterday, was it not? About the different building scenarios and different proposing possibilities and maybe putting on for next week a work session, if everybody seemed in agreement maybe. If you could put a work session on for next week and kind of talk through some of those for us, if you wouldn't mind, and more information and maybe we'll have more ideas by then. All right, thank you. That was all I had.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.